All right. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 17th, 2020 Board Meeting. The Board of Education has been in closed session since 6:00 for the items listed on the agenda. We have four board members present and two on conference call via a motion made in closed session for --
Actually, it was an open session before you went into closed.
Oh, in open session, we made a motion to have two people enter the meeting via conference call for health reasons, and we have one member absent. So I will call the roll, or if you could call the roll, and then we'll continue. Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Absent.
Okay. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. So we have six members present and one absent, and we did call the roll as well going in when we were in open session prior to closed session, but due to the conference call and things are a little different, as they are in a lot of ways right now, we want to make sure everyone knows who's present. So at this time, I will ask that we stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the universal bar for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, the Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. I have no one signed in on the speakers list, and is there anyone else that would like to participate in public comment? All right. We have no one. We will move on to -- due to the current situation, we have gotten our agenda down to a pretty slim business agenda so that we can keep things in the district going, but we wanted to respect that there's a lot of things going on outside in the world right now. So we will move through this agenda and keep the district moving. All right. So first item is approval of board meeting minutes. We have approval of February 25th, 2020, and March 3rd, 2020 minutes. Did anyone have any changes to those? Margaret and Courtney, did you have any changes?
No.
Okay, then those minutes stand as presented. We -- approval of February 25th, 2020 minutes, and March 3rd, 2020, sorry, closed session minutes, the February 25th, 2020 closed session minutes, those stand as presented. Next is the superintendent's agenda, consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Karen would. Okay. Which item?
Items E.
Okay. Karen would like to pull item E. Would anyone else like to pull another item? Okay.
So motion?
So is there a motion for consent agenda without item E?
I move the Board approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through D, and items F through K.
I second. Okay. You can call the vote.
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. We have six eyes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes.
All right. If I could have a motion for item E?
I move that the Board of Education approve the service agreement with Eric Scheninger for professional learning in the amount of $30,000.
I second. Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, I pulled this item just, you know, we're listening to our public, and they -- I think that it's important for us to provide some background and the value of when we use consultants. And I know that when I talked to Dr. Moyer about what all is involved with this particular person who's been involved with the district for several years now, and it's important for our community to understand how integrated he is and what he has been doing with the district and what we would like him to provide. And it really has a lot to do with, and at the core, is educating our students. And so I think it's important for us to, you know, provide additional information than what was in the board documentation. So if Dr. Moore would do that, that would be great.
So in 2015-16, the district began implementing what was known as MLI, Mobile Learning Implementation, which is one-to-one personalized learning, which is now reached to all grade levels, except our very youngest grade levels, I believe, have a one-to-two learning environment in their classrooms. And so that's a significant investment of dollars in devices. And the purpose of engaging with Eric Scheninger is, he is one of the national leaders in terms of utilizing technology to leverage student learning. And I had some concerns that we were not maximizing our use of technology to the greatest benefit of our students. We had devices, but I thought that we had some things that we needed to take a look at. And when used properly, technology can enhance personalized learning, promote rigor, help increase student engagement, support the six Cs, and something that we a lot of times don't talk about, but that can be one of the top uses of it, would be in how we formatively assess students in their learning in real time. And so we wanted to get some baseline data on how we were actually using the technology, and we did that last year. And we learned some things from it, and the learnings were taken to various groups, district leadership team, instructional coaches, our principal teams, our technology committee, and all of these groups are using this information to try to help us develop professional learning plans, take a look at strategies for comprehensive improvement in all areas, how do we deploy our instructional coaches, what does our D-205 University course offerings look like, how are we embedding the technology infrastructure into things like our curriculum design process, our mentoring and induction program? Are the issues professional learning, or are there other things, like we just plain don't have the types of resources that at the various grade levels that teachers think are most impactful? And do we need to take a look at shifting direction in certain areas? So all of those, all of that information is being used to guide kind of a comprehensive approach to improvement. So what we're trying to do is, now that we have baseline data, is bring him back so that we can further correlate the tech integration efforts in the district and try to assess the extent to which we've grown in some of the different areas that came out of his initial report, so that we can then continue to focus on the things that are working or revise accordingly and take into account additional data and additional feedback. So this contract would lock us in at this year's rates, because the rates for the organization that he works with are going up. So he wanted to give us the opportunity to do that, because we have an existing relationship with him. And he would then go back into all of our schools, work with our various groups on the findings, and between now and then, also help support some of these other efforts as we try to implement some of our plans going forward.
So the clarification, I just want to make sure that we're clear, is, in the documentation for board docs that the public can see, is it looks like it's five days, but it's really Eric working with the organization throughout the year, doing many different things.
Yes. He does provide support in an ongoing way and will help us plan to get the most out of the time that he is on campus, and so there's a variety of different work beyond just his physical presence on those days.
Courtney or Margaret, did you have any questions?
No. No, I, you know, I just, what I did want to just say is that for me and my perspective, as we have a new Director of Technology coming in, I like the idea that a year out from now, we're going to have somebody assess where we're at, not only just with our district, but in our classrooms and our students, and make sure from a perspective that we're on the right track of where we want to be. So I think this is a valuable decision we're making at this time, given the new Director of Technology that's coming in for our district.
Margaret?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Then go ahead and call the vote. Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes.
All right. Next up is the superintendent's agenda, action items, approval of York High School principal.
So we completed the search process last week with a recommendation that we feel comfortable bringing forward to the Board, to recommend that Shahae Bhagdusarian, who is currently, or Bhagdusarian, I guess, actually, I pronounce it incorrectly, so I apologize. He's currently the principal at Glenbard East High School, where he has been serving in that capacity since 2015. He recently completed his doctorate in education, or defended his dissertation, so he's got his doctorate, and he'll get his degree in May. He has a student services background, in addition to his leadership and curriculum and instruction background, which I think fits nicely also with some of the other things that we are addressing. But some of the things that I think stood out to me were his focus on equity, his work that he's done in his district on assessment, and his very, very deliberate approach to trying to quantify improvement with specific goals, and to articulate that work very intentionally with the middle school people that feed into his high schools. So I think he was very, very well received by the interview committees, and I'm very comfortable making this recommendation to the Board that he be approved tonight.
Could I have a motion at this time?
I move that the Board of Education approve Shahae Bhagdusarian as the principal of York High School, with a base salary of $182,801 per year, and a start date of July 1st, 2020.
I second. Okay. Jim?
You know, in a future meeting, when the future Dr. Bhagdusarian is here, I'll elaborate on this statement, because it'd probably be more appropriate at that time and in the interest of time this evening. But I'll just say, this is hiring Shahae Bhagdusarian is a big win, a very big win, for our students, our faculty, our school district, and our community. I couldn't be happier that he is going to be the future, the new principal at York High School.
This is Margaret. I have a question. Dave, would you mind, you spoke about the interviewing process. Would you mind just outlining what that interview process looked like?
Yes. We posted the position, and we had 38 applicants. We had first-round interviews where we brought five sitting principals in, and we brought four of them back, or invited four of them back for second-round interviews. One of the four that we invited back accepted another position at a very prominent high school district, and the timing of that was within a day of our second round of interviews, so there was just, it was just one of those things. But I say that only because I believe that the pool, the final pool of candidates was very strong, so Shahae emerged among a very strong pool of candidates, I think, overall. And then, and that round of interviews was with cabinet, and then the second round of interviews, there were about 32 or so people on three different interview committees that included students and parents, teachers. We had two board members. We had department chairs, student services personnel, wide cross-representation of all areas, fine arts and activities and all of those types of things as well. And then there was a personal interview with some of our top instructional people and me, as part of that process, and a fifth step that day where they had to address a dataset and provide a writing sample around that dataset, and then obviously reference checks and the other normal application processes that are involved as well with their paperwork and us scrutinizing their experiences to kind of fit with the input and feedback that we got from various groups about the types of different things that they were looking for in the next high school principal. We surveyed board members, we surveyed teachers at the high school, and we surveyed parents. And we got fairly comprehensive input into some of the different qualities that the community thought would be important in the next high school principal.
Thank you.
Courtney, anything?
No, nothing here.
All right. I too agree that I think this is a great thing for York High School, so. All right. If there's no other, did you have some?
I just wanted to say that I've noticed that many of the things that Shahae has worked on and achieved in his district are things that I know we feel are important here as a community and that we see as goals we'd like to be working towards as well. So I'm excited to have him here in our district.
Okay. Call the vote, please. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes.
All right. Next on the superintendent's agenda is the approval of the resolution providing for the issue of general obligation bonds. And I'll let you and Chris maybe explain that.
Sure. So we brought this up. This came through the Finance Committee. This was already discussed at a previous board meeting. We were asked to verify if we would be able to spend that money in the time parameters. We had to spend 50% of that money within a certain period of time, and when we went back to our facilities people, that was not going to be a problem. So we were able to confirm that. And also, we were asked to provide some additional information about the breakeven and cut point as to the extent to which we would lose money or come out ahead on this. So at one point, we thought that this would be advantageous, but the advice that we're getting from Elizabeth right now is that now is not the time to actually sell the bonds, but that it is advisable that we pass the resolution so that we have the flexibility to sell these bonds if we think that the market is right. And how long, how long do we have to pass that? Is it six months?
Six months.
Do you want to add anything to what I said?
I think you've covered it. Six months. But rates currently, last week, late last week, the rates on muni bonds went back up. So currently, it's not advantageous to sell the bonds now, but that could change in the next six months, so this gives us the flexibility.
So I'll ask for a motion, and then we can discuss or ask questions.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $40 million general, dollars, general obligation school bonds, Series 2020, of Community Unit School District Number 205, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of paying certain costs of those capital projects approved by referendum at the November 6th, 2018, general election, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to Raymond James and Associates, Inc.
I second. Okay. Discussion questions? Jim?
Not to, let me just add this to what's already been said by Dr. Moyer and Mr. Welton. You know, due to what our country's going through right now, our, the financial markets in the United States have undergone an extreme amount of volatility. A few weeks ago, we had, you know, there was a generational opportunity to issue some debt at very low rates. Due to the panic in the market, that opportunity's gone away. But what this allows us to do as things normalize again, once-in-a-lifetime opportunities may reappear in the financial markets, and we'll be ready to capitalize upon those. And this certainly gives us the option, but not the obligation, to issue these bonds. If those, if the conditions are not favorable and do not represent an outstanding opportunity for our taxpayers, then we won't go ahead with this. But we want to be ready in case those opportunities present themselves.
Thanks for that explanation. Margaret or Courtney, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, this is a question. So absolutely, what has been going on, and particularly in relation to the COVID-19, there's been a lot of volatility in our markets, and it does, it has not appeared that, well, let me restate, that this COVID-19 is not expected to be resolved over the next two weeks. So I am trying to understand the benefit in approving this resolution now versus, you know, in a, in an upcoming board meeting, you know, in April or May or sometime further.
Okay. Jim? Jim's going to answer.
Yeah. Margaret, as part of the process, first of all, there's a bunch of legal work that has to be done, and that takes time. And then also, we have to be rerated by Standard &amp; Poor's, and that's about a month-long process, given the demand that they have for their services. So we won't be ready to go. If an opportunity presented itself tomorrow, we couldn't capitalize on it. We need that rating from S&amp;P. So we have a lead time here of three to four weeks before we're even ready to go, and then we have an opportunity for two to six months after that where we are ready to go. So if the opportunity presents itself in that timeframe, we're ready for it. But the longer we delay a decision to put, to approve this parameters resolution, the higher the chance that an opportunity presents itself that we are not in a position to take advantage of.
And just to clarify, the resolution is good for how long?
Six months. Six months.
Six months. Okay. So it's, the resolution stands for six months. Does that answer your question, Margaret?
Um, yes. And, well, yeah, so that answers that question. And then one more question, and I know no one can predict the market right now, but is there some type of thought process that something is possible that would change over the next month to two months? Has there been indication or thought that something would change to improve the market?
So, you know, while, you're right, you can't predict the future. You can only react to what the market gives you and the opportunities that it presents. But, you know, you could imagine a scenario that one of the pharmaceutical firms comes out with a successful vaccine for this virus. That would, that would restore a lot of calm to the markets. I mean, you can paint all sorts of scenarios, right? That in fact, what we're going through right now actually does flatten the curve, and this country does not look like some European countries in terms of the, becoming an epicenter for, for this virus. So, you know, the scenarios like that would put a great deal of optimism back into the market. And you could also have a scenario where a few weeks from now, you know, this, what we're going through right now did not work, and it would put quite a bit of pessimism into the market. But, you know, we've seen the 10-year Treasury lately trade at a range of 50 basis points to, you know, 1%, and that is, I mean, that's unprecedented. What happened in the municipal market is, is an opportunity occurred because it, interest rates became lowered by, you know, that fear and demand, and then people stopped buying municipal bonds out of fear. With some optimism, the market returns for municipal bonds, and there is great demand, and we would be, if there were great demand, we would be in a position to capitalize that on fairly short notice. Does that help at all?
Yes, it does. And I apologize. One last question. What, no, I apologize. Do you perceive any risk in us approving this option today?
The only, like, the only financial risk, I mean, if we do nothing because an opportunity never presents herself, is we have to pay S&amp;P for the rating. It's about $10,000.
Thank you.
But, you know, it's, the downside is $10,000. The upside is literally millions of dollars of savings for our taxpayers over the next 25 years. Yeah. As Karen, Karen did say, we have, we've actually had a very good track record of timing the market and coming close to the low tick in the market in terms of interest rates, and we've saved our taxpayers tens of millions of dollars so far.
And when you say save the taxpayer money, you mean it's money that the taxpayer never had to pay? Is that correct?
Correct. And it --
I'd just like to clarify that.
Right.
All right. Margaret, does that answer your questions?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Courtney, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Anybody else? Okay. Then go ahead and call the vote, please. Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent.
Six eyes, no nays, one absent, the motion passes. All right, Item C, approval of purchase of Lenovo Chromebooks, Chrome Management Licenses, and Chrome Care Warranty.
We are aware of likely supply chain issues, and normally, this would be part of the April presentation and on the April board agenda. But the longer we wait to get some of the, these, some of this equipment purchased, the greater likelihood there is that there'll be a disruption to the start of the school year and our ability to have anything that is available and does come in ready and in students' hands. So the recommendation is that we purchase this immediately and try to prevent that. And obviously, Dave can speak to that, but that's essentially the purpose of this recommendation. And financially, we can adjust to this. So we're recommending that we go ahead and approve it.
So I'll ask for a motion and then if there's questions.
I move that the Board of Education approve and authorize the superintendent or the superintendents designated to purchase Lenovo 500E Chromebooks for sale to York freshmen and transfer students, Chrome Management Licenses, and Chrome Care Warranty from Technology Resource Advisors, Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $270,000 in purchase price.
A second?
Any questions or comments? Karen?
Yeah, Dave, just to clarify, this has been in your budget, and this has been planned. All we're doing is moving it up.
It would have been in the fiscal '21 budget for purchase. So what, this is a little bit of an anomaly where we're pulling it up into fiscal '20, the purchase. However, the fiscal '21 budget then will be reduced by corresponding amounts. So it's really a, a net, a net zero, but we're just moving it up one year. So there will be a budget, what's the term, Chris? A budget variance in an expenditure category, probably the equipment expenditure because of this.
Courtney or Margaret?
Nothing.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you for thinking about this. I think, you know, this is good thinking and thinking ahead to hopefully keep us, you know, on track for our students and not disrupt their learning. So thank you for doing that, especially since we recognize you for retirement a few weeks ago. So, thank you. All right, go ahead and call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. Item D, approval of transportation contract with First Student.
So Chris can speak to this if there are questions, but the recommendation is that we extend our contract with First Student at a 5.5% increase for the 2020, 2021 school year. To be clear, that number sounds like it's a high number. But there, but we have a nationwide shortage of bus drivers, and we believe that if we bid this out, we would likely get inferior service and end up with a contract that has an even higher price tag on it. So that's the rationale for going ahead to bring this forward to you tonight.
If I can have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the extension of the contract for regular transportation services with First Student, Incorporated, with a 5.5% increase in route and field trip rates for the 2020, 2021 school year.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Jim?
You know, last year, we took advantage of an option that was put in our original contract and had a marginal price increase for students, for, for First Student Services. I think we also saw some other school districts put their bus contracts out to bid and got them back at ranges of like around 20% higher than they were actually paying. So I'll, I think we owe Mr. Welton a big thank you for using his negotiating abilities to, to get an increase that looks like all we're doing is absorbing some additional costs that First Student is, is faced with. And I think that's a great job.
Yeah, and I know that, was it three years ago, Chris? We had a lot of issues with different bus companies, and it was, we changed contracts because of it. And we don't hear those items. And that's something to be said as well.
I think Karen's got a great point. As First Student has, has given us very good service. A few years ago, every day, the board got a report of something happening on the bus or the bus did something in traffic. And we get very few of those now.
Courtney or Margaret?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, then please call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. All right, Item E, approval of early property tax resolution.
So this was talked about at Finance Committee and also at a previous board meeting. This is just the recommendation to go forward with counting the early property taxes in June in, for the year that we actually spend the money, not the year that we receive the money, because that is, in effect, perceptually makes it look like we have more money than we have. None of it changes our actual revenue stream. It's just an accounting measure. So Chris can explain in greater detail if you would like, if, during discussion.
Okay, could I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution providing for the deferral of the early June taxes to the following fiscal year.
I second.
Okay, questions or discussion? Karen?
I think this is a great thing for us to be doing. It really gives a more accurate picture of what our revenue and expense stream is. What it really says is, the June taxes are really for the, the year that the students are, are working, right? And so to, I think it's important for us to then put those, that revenue tax stream in, in June, where we're starting to spend it, not when we've been, for the last two years? Correct me if it's been longer than that, Chris. We have seen the incentives for people to pay their taxes earlier, so we've been getting more revenue earlier. And so it looks like we have all this extra money at the end of a calendar year or school year in May, when that money really has, is to be used come June and that following school year, if that makes sense. It just, I think it's important for us to kind of clarify why this is a really smart move for us to be doing, because it's a more accurate accounting of our revenue stream and when we were, the expenses that, that we would use that revenue for.
Beth, sorry, Courtney or Margaret?
Nothing, no.
Okay, go ahead and call the vote then.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Item F, approval of resolution authorizing notice of nonrenewal to non-tenure teachers other than final year probational, probational teachers.
So the school code has different provisions, one for first through third-year teachers and one for fourth-year teachers. This relates to first through third-year teachers. Both have deadlines and notification requirements about notifying people in writing by certain calendar dates prior to the end of the school year. For the people who are doing this for the first time, this happens in March of every year. It is the traditional board meeting that meets those requirements, and so we bring those recommendations to you. And then, in many cases, we, we do have people that are called back. So we, this year, just for the record, we don't anticipate any actual true layoffs or reductions in force. So we're not, we're not downsizing our, our teaching staff. Sometimes people wonder what some of the different terms mean, like reduction in force. We traditionally lay off our part-time people, and then we, we bring many of them back. And the reason for that is to give us the flexibility to staff our buildings where we need to place them. And the law allows us to do that. All of those types of things have been explained. I'm making a little bit of a public comment about it because it seems like every year when we do this, the board asks me to make some of these statements. If you have further or additional questions, Mark is also on the conference line and can go into greater detail if you feel that's necessary.
Okay, thanks. Could, motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing notice of nonrenewal to non-tenure teachers other than final year probational teachers.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Karen?
Yeah, the only other thing that, Dave, I wanted to make sure that we say is it's based on our student count and enrollment and student needs, right?
Yeah, Mark, if you want to elaborate, feel free. But it's essentially based on, our staffing is driven by enrollment and course selection primarily. But the third factor that is very prominent is this, the special learning populations of students and the fluctuations of their needs and how we have to support them.
Did you want to say anything, Mark?
Sure, no, just, just to give you an idea of where we stand right now, staffing-wise across the district, we are going to be up, we're projecting about seven FTE next year over this year, driven primarily due to the addition of all-day kindergarten. If we were not adding all-day kindergarten, we would be looking at an FTE reduction of about three across our different levels. We have some staffing inefficiencies we're able to see at our middle school level. But we are up in some of, as Dr. Moyer mentioned, we are up in some of our other areas, especially the service of our English-language learner students as well as special education. So, but we would be a net down if we were not adding all-day kindergarten.
And, and all-day kindergarten is a cost-neutral proposition based on it being a tuition-driven program. Although, we do, I would like to say to the board that over the next couple of years of implementation, because we're doing it on a space-available basis until the construction is complete, we have a lot of different variables that we're taking into account with staffing, where we need to put our special area teachers, how we're going to be providing support for student services. So, so, you know, I do want people to start to process the fact that over the next couple of years, there are gonna, there's a staffing committee as part of the planning for the, the facilities build-out. And there's a lot of various different complexities that, that are going to go into that. So the number of teachers in different areas could go up or down a little bit, or people could have to be in one building one year and another building another year. There's just a lot of different things that are going to kick in starting next year. And so as long as we have a chance to, to bring that up, people can, you know, start thinking about that so they're not quite as surprised later in the fall when we start giving some of these committee reports and other things like that going into next spring.
Margaret or Courtney, do you have any questions or comments?
No. No.
Okay, anybody else? All right, then you can call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. Item G, approval of resolution authorizing the dismissal of final year probational teachers.
So as I said, this is essentially the same thing. It's just that there are some different provisions due to the fact that these are fourth-year teachers.
A motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the dismissal of final year probational teachers.
I second.
Any questions or comments? Margaret or Courtney?
No.
All right, I look at Beth because she's by, when I look over by the phone and then say that, so. You guys are good?
No.
Okay. All right, then go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. Item H, approval of resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers.
So this, this final one is the one that has to do with the, the teachers that are part-time. And routinely, every year, we, we blanket, issue a blanket, nonrenewal to everybody who's not full-time, and then call them back and place them into the areas where we have need. And that's, that's, that's a routine thing that we do every year. That has nothing to do with performance. It has nothing to do with, well, it may have a little bit to do with enrollment when we get to the part where we start calling people back. And, and maybe some people have a little bit more of a fractional percent teaching load than they did the year before or a little bit less. But that's, that's what this last motion pertains to.
Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Courtney or Margaret?
No. No.
Okay, all right, please call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. All right, superintendents communication? We have Freedom of Information Act requests?
So we have six this, this time. One requesting specific bid results, which was granted. One requesting a specific agreement, which was granted. One requesting specific invoices, which was granted. One requesting a specific contract, which was granted. One requesting specific retirement information, which was granted. One requesting specific grading information, which was granted. Only other thing I have is, would definitely be remiss if I did not comment on what an unbelievable job my team did over these last five to 10 days or however long it's been, I don't know. It's just been one long mess of time across, across every single area of the organization. So a lot of great work. Unfortunate work, but considering it had to be done, a great job by a lot of people. Unfortunate work, but considering it had to be done, a great job by a lot of people.
I, I would like to say thank you. I'm sure everyone feels the same way that, you know, the community, the schools really, everywhere, but especially here, they're the heart of the community. And you and your team stepped up and really led through this process to where I think, you know, people were communicated with as much as, you know, things have changed, it feels like by the moment. And so, you know, special thanks too to Bev, who isn't here tonight, but has been putting out communications for a long time. But thank you. I think the community is grateful and knows they can keep looking to the schools for continued communication and feeling that sense of community even while we're all most likely going to be separated for a while. So thank you for that. And yeah, Jim?
If I can add two things. First of all, I, I think there is some frustration understandably among people that, that we don't have all the answers because a lot of things haven't been decided in Springfield. So, you know, if the communication coming from our administration seems like it's not absolute, that's because things are still in motion and, and as we wait for decisions at the state level. But I'd also like to give a shout-out to somebody who probably doesn't often get a shout-out, and that's to Darlene Rossetti. Am I, Rossetti, right? Who is the regional, the DuPage Regional Superintendent of Schools, who I think, you know, as I see what goes on behind the scenes, has done a great job of getting all of the DuPage County school districts and superintendents together and providing a lot of leadership and a lot of direction that, that we can give to our communities and that, you know, we have not had, you know, one school district closed and the neighboring school district open, just adding to the confusion that is, you know, already present. So I, I think she's done a great job in DuPage in fostering communication and demonstrated a lot of leadership over the past few weeks.
Margaret or Courtney?
Just an echo of saying thank you to all those who've worked so diff, so diligently, trying to get things completed with imperfect information, and that information is still changing. But our ability to communicate with our staff, with our community, with our students, I think it just, it helps lighten this already burden that we're carrying. So again, thank you to all involved.
Just echo the same thing, not just to the cabinet, but especially Bev and all of your team, Dr. Moyer, because I do appreciate in times of uncertainty, I think our community naturally looks for consistent communication and continuous communication. And I, as a parent and a board member, I have really appreciated everything that we've seen and heard from the district, even your fireside chat. I mean, it was one that will go down in history, I just have to say. But I do-
Well, thank you, Courtney.
-the time that your entire team have taken to keep us informed, keep the entire community informed.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Is there a tweet of the week or?
Oh, do we have one? Ooh, all right, excellent. Thought we were gonna have to forego that.
Okay. All right, you want me to read it? All right. Schools, from Ben Hartman, "Schools mean more than just learning and teaching amidst the craziness at the end of day yesterday. My high schoolers were talking about how they'd miss class each other in our work. While the situation is sideways, I was so proud of them sharing with one another." Ignite, IgniteD205.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Ben, and really thank you to all the teachers who, you know, have just put forth a lot of effort to try to support kids in a lot of different ways. So thank you to the community and all our staff for that. And with that, we're down to board communications. Does anybody have anything? Courtney or Margaret?
No. No.
Okay. Then we have two upcoming meetings scheduled. Tuesday, April 14th, 2020, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here in District 205 Center, 7:00 PM. And Tuesday, April 28th, 2020, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here at 7 o'clock, District 205 Center. And I would, if you're in the community, I would, oh, do you have a finance committee?
Finance and Operations, April 7th at 5:30.
Okay. Finance Committee meeting, April 7th, here in District 205 Center at 5:30. And obviously with the changing events, we will keep the community updated if we have to change the way we meet or, you know, things change. So stay tuned, stay in touch with the school district. They're working hard to keep communications going as things change rapidly. And to everyone in our community, stay well. Meeting adjourned.